I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission to order. The first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda for December 3rd, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Next is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on November 5th, 2013. Any corrections, additions anybody sees to those minutes?
I'd move that we accept the minutes as sent out.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on November 5th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Next is the staff report, or excuse me, financial report. Staff?
This is Anderson with staff, and of course, this is the financial report for the end of October 2013, so that puts us at about 25 percent of the year. You can see the, looking through the items, we're at about 30 percent of the main one, which is the personal services. We had an extra payday in there, just based on how many Fridays were in a month, so that's where a little ways ahead there. Otherwise, we're actually flipping to the second side, actually a little bit ahead on a lot of the revenue in terms of sale of publications and rent and property leases, so we're about right on track where we should be for the year, if not a little ways ahead in the revenue.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any questions, I'll look for a motion to place it on file and move it on to council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What's going on? Next is oral presentations. This is for any item that's not on today's agenda, if anybody would like to come and speak to that. See none, we'll get into the agenda items. First is a hearing, rezone. Sorry, my packet. Thank you, sir. The time is now 4:03, and a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by the City of Waterloo to rezone 12 acres from R4 RP Plan Residence District to BP Business Park District, and 110 acres from A1 Agricultural District to BP Business Park District located in the southeast corner of US Highway 20 and Ainsborough Avenue for the future business park development. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on November 21st, 2013." Receive a motion, receive, can we have a motion or receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
This is Andero's staff. It would not appear that the rezon would have a negative impact upon the surrounding area or other surrounding land uses. Proposed rezon request will increase traffic on the surrounding streets when fully developed. Negative impact is not expected to be significant and can be minimized through access control, traffic control devices and geometric design improvements when needed. Roads adjacent to the rezoned area are Ainsborough Avenue, which is classified as a minor arterial, and US Highway 20, which is classified as a principal arterial. To north is Highway 20, existing professional office development, zone BP Business Park. South is vacant agricultural ground, zone A1 Agricultural District. East is vacant agricultural ground, also zoned A1, and west is vacant agricultural ground as well as four houses along Ainsborough Avenue, zone A1 Agricultural District. Surrounding area is mostly comprised of vacant development ground with the exception of professional office development along the north side of Highway 20, north of the rezoned area. Much of the professional office north of the Highway 20 was developed in the 1990s up to the present. There are two single-family residences on the east side of Ainsborough Avenue and four on the west side near the rezoned area. These residences were developed in the early 1900s to the 1950s. Future land use map designates the majority of this area as business park, professional office, commercial and compatible light industrial. Land on the east side of Ainsborough Avenue is mixed commercial, medium to high-density residential, professional office and compatible commercial. The rezon request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area. The site is located within the primary growth area. Proposed rezon area covers areas that are zoned A1 Agricultural District and R4 RP Plan Residence District. A total of 12 acres will be rezoned from R4 RP and 110 acres will be rezoned from A1 Agricultural District. Overall, a total of 122 acres is requested to be rezoned. Land to the north of the rezoned area was rezoned in 2004 to open up potential for new commercial and compatible light industrial development in the area. Rezoning of the land in question would be a proactive step as it would appropriately zone the land for new development to occur. City has been actively purchasing property in this area for the potential of new development to occur. The plans for this area entail a business park with commercial and compatible light industrial development. It is to ask recommendation that the request to rezon from A1 Agricultural District and R4 RP Plan Residence District to BP Business Park be approved for the following reasons: The site in question would appear to provide sufficient space to meet all required regulations, including setbacks, drainage, landscaping, screening, et cetera. Would not appear that rezoning the land to BP Business Park would have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, as rezoning the land as such would fit the future plans for this area. And three, the rezoned area is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area.
Any questions for staff? See none? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the rezon request by the city? See none? Look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is now closed. Any discussion from the commission?
Make a motion that we approve the rezon request?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the rezon request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That rezon request carries. Next is a site plan amendment request, and the time is now 4:07, and a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Valentine Enterprises LLC for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the establishment of a salvage yard located at 729 West Airline Highway. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on November 21st, 2013." Could we have a motion, receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address, and the members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. Staff report?
If it's okay, I'm going to combine the site plan amendment for this request and the special permit.
That's fine.
Okay. The applicant is requesting to establish a 37-acre salvage yard at 729 West Airline Highway. The request could have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the proposed use is surrounded by agriculturally-zoned land to the northeast, north and east, and industrially-zoned land to the west, and residentially-land to the south. Proper conditions and safeguards could adequately address concerns for negative impact. Future land use map partially designates this site as industrial, and the request may be compatible with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, although portions are designated as residential. Planned districts such as the M2P Planned Industrial District require that any changes to the use or proposed site plan of the site go through a site plan amendment approval process, including approval of the city council after a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant is requesting to establish a 37-acre auto salvage yard at the site in question. The applicant has noted that he will meet all setbacks and fencing, screening requirements. Site plan shows new fencing to be built in phases as land develops to the south. The site currently has significant amounts of junk and salvage material on the property, and the property owner has been involved with code enforcement action for illegal accumulations of junk at the site. The site currently has minimal solid fencing and does not appear to be actively operated as a salvage yard. Staff believes that a more detailed plan, including a business plan, of how the site would be operated as a salvage/junkyard should be required. Also, indication needs to be provided as to what the existing house on the property will be used for. If it is to remain on the property for residential use, an area around the house should be excluded from the special permit area and a solid fence located between the house and the primary business building at a minimum of a distance of at least 20 feet behind the house so that the house can meet setback requirements as if it is on a separate lot. Staff is also concerned with the placement of a salvage yard in such a close proximity to residential homes to the south. A buffer area of several hundred feet along the south property line being excluded from the site plan amendment approval may be acceptable alternative and would still leave a very large area that could be used for the salvage yard. Staff has received a letter of opposition from Dennis Clark and Mary Eldridge of 2204 Ashland Avenue, and have received other calls in opposition to the request. The opposition indicates that this is an inappropriate location for a salvage yard and have expressed concerns regarding water quality as most of the homes in the area are on wells. They have also noted concerns on noise, air quality and environmental pollution. Also, staff has been given indication that the applicant, Valentine Enterprises LLC, has been administratively dissolved, raising concern if a proper application has been filed. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment in the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the establishment of an auto salvage yard generally located at 729 West Airline Highway be tabled so that additional information can be provided, including information on the proper ownership status of the applicant and additional detailed plans, including a business plan and how the site would be properly operated as a salvage yard. If the request were to be approved, staff would recommend that it be for the following reasons. The use would appear to fit in with similar uses found in the neighborhood. The request is generally located in an industrial area and partially shown on the future land use map as industrial. The request would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and subject to the following conditions. The site plan amendment approval shall not include the area around the existing dwelling at 729 West Airline Highway, and no junk or salvage material shall be kept in or around said dwelling to a point extending 20 feet behind the dwelling. And the site plan amendment approval shall not include the south 300 feet of the property, and that all fencing around the salvage recycling area be an eight-foot solid material with an earth-ton color, brown or dark green. With the fencing along the property, zone A1 Agricultural District, being set back a minimum of eight feet, and within this eight-foot setback, a minimum of two-inch caliper understory tree shall be planted and maintained with a maximum separation between trees of 50 feet. Also, that a private fire hydrant be located on the property and connected to the water main in West Airline Highway. Also, that no crushing of vehicles or salvaging materials shall occur on the site. Also, that no stacking of vehicles and materials shall be permitted above the height of the fence. No vehicles, parts, equipment or salvage materials shall be stored outside of the fence portion at any time, overnight, early morning, et cetera. If owner feels necessary, feels it's necessary for customer transactions, they shall provide a space within the fenced area, potentially through the design of a double fence system to have customers pull salvage vehicles directly behind a fenced area for discussion, sale or drop-off purposes. And lastly, all areas for vehicular uses outside of the fenced area shall be hard surface and an area within also, within be also hard surface to eliminate mud, dust, to be tracked outside of the fenced area. That was for the site plan amendment, and I'll just summarize the special permit quickly. As with the site plan amendment, the zoning ordinance requires that any salvage recycling yard obtained a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is due to the potential impact that this type of use can have on an area. If this request, we're also recommending that the special permit request be tabled due to some of the same concerns as far as detailed plans and some of the residential homes to the south. That was a lot. Any questions for staff?
Questions for staff from the commission?
Thanks, Chris. See none? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request as well as the special permit request? Name and address, please.
Name is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Well, I couldn't hardly hear you folks, especially the fellow that just got off the mic. So turn it up a little bit so we can hear. William Smith, he put that picture back up there of the property site. I'm on Ashland Avenue, 2260, and I'm adjacent to that property right there, just to the south. And a lot of us folks here are south of there and some are on Airline Highway. I heard all the information about the site plan and everything possibly tabled. Well, there's a lot of folks here right now who'd like to get some answers about why this was so short-fused. A lot of us were out of town for the holiday. I come back from Washington DC, I had two letters. One said Dear &amp; Company for this site, and the other, two days later, or a day later, was Valentine Enterprises. So we'd like to have some answers of why this was sent out from the city, Dear &amp; Company for this site, and then a day later, Valentine Enterprises. If you can give us some answers on that, where that come from, and as far as being tabled, myself, I'd see it not being tabled, I'd see eliminated. Thank you.
That first letter was simply a mistake. The second letter was to rectify that mistake.
They're both dated.
Right.
25, 26 December.
Right.
And then the date on the letter was 2012.
Right.
It's all originated in 2012 and is coming out of that in a hurry here.
Right.
Two or three days, we're supposed to make up our minds.
Okay.
My name is Mark Little, and I live at 803 Midland Street, about two blocks away from that proposed site. I just have a question. When Willie said that he received the letter, actually, I guess it's been three to four days before this hearing, is that, is that normal? Is that the normal process that they receive three days' notice on something of this major happening in that area? And two, is it normal just to send letters to abutting homes? I mean, I live two blocks away. I didn't know anything about this until the other night, till they came down to my place. I think it should be expanded. I think it should be sent out at least a three to four-block range, maybe. But that concerns me, you know, the notice. The notice is a day before Thanksgiving, and the meeting is tonight. Eric?
Eric Trader, city planner. The ordinance requires that the notice be sent out 10 days in advance. That's mailed out, so that Friday, that's essentially a week and a half ahead of the Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting is when we mail that out. They did go out on that Friday. Based on turn-in deadlines of when applications are required to be in, we don't have a lot of leeway in there to try and get notices out any sooner than that, and I would suspect in this particular instance, given the holidays in there, maybe it got hung up through the postal service a little longer than it otherwise normally would have. Regarding the area that gets notified, that's also provided for in the ordinance. It calls for property owners within 250 feet of a requested rezon or site plan amendment to be notified, so anytime you talk about, you know, what is an appropriate distance, you know, it's difficult. You get into more of a remote rural area, and sometimes 250 feet does not get very far. It may only get one or two properties deep around the perimeter, but you get into, you know, more of the dense areas of the city, and 250 feet can notify more than a block away and can notify hundreds of property owners. So it's, I mean, certainly something that can be looked at to change that code, but it's always something that we've struggled with, what is the appropriate distance for notification.
I noticed in the information that I downloaded off the site yesterday, which was the photographs and everything, it said that the impact on the neighborhood and surrounding land uses would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. But did I hear that someone say, Chris, it will now have a negative impact?
We provided an updated staff report to the Planning and Zoning Commission, changing some of the comments and changing the recommendation to a recommendation of tabling based on some of the additional information that we were starting to receive, opposition, other concerns being noted, concerns on ownership status and some of those issues that we decided to table and made some other tweaks to the staff report. So yes, there was some significant changes to the staff report.
And one of those changes was that the land zoned to the south is residential. It says industrial in here.
Correct. That was, that was an error in the staff report that was corrected.
Then I think I'd also like to address the development history when it talks about the surrounding residential uses, the homes. They're predominantly 1950s and 60s, but go back as far as 1938. I think if you wind out just a little bit further, you got one house that was just built last year, a $400,000 house, approximately a block away from this salvage yard. I'm two blocks away. My house was built in 86, my neighbor's in 87, so it's not a bunch of older homes in that area. I think there's some newer homes too. Thank you.
My name is Harold Getty. I live at 1555 Woodmere Drive. I sit on the Waterloo City Council, and I have not had as many phone calls on a subject for months and months and years on the city council as I have had on this idea of what you're talking about this afternoon. So I am totally against it, and the people that have called me are totally against it also, so.
I bought the 130 acres that butts up right beside this. I think it's 535 and 537 Airline Highway. I bought that 130 acres, and 30 acres is wetlands in there, which me and the DNR would like to develop a pond and all that and give it back, kind of the community and stuff. And I'm a little scared with the water runoff and what happens from this property going over if it becomes a salvage yard. The two letters, I don't understand. I own a business in Waterloo, KNM Service. I get my mail every day, and I got this mail on Monday. And that letter came to me, so that's basically give me a day ahead of time. I don't understand how Valentine Enterprise LLC can even request this if they're not even established with the state, because if you pull it up in the state secretary, he's not even established. So I really think you guys need to table this, and we need to look into it a lot more and give us more time to get our facts together. Thanks.
I'm Brian Roof, 2135 Ashland. I'm the one that just built the house to the south of this property, and I'm concerned with the water. We have a well and septic system. Anybody knows that if they've seen a salvage yard, the oil, they try to keep it contained, but it never gets completely contained, so I'm really worried about the water. We have a brand-new home. If we'd have known that they were going to do something like this, we definitely would have, would have not put so much money into this house. We love the area. We like the openness and not having all this industrial stuff right to the side of us. So I think it really should be eliminated.
I'm Jim Drouedy, and I live at 843 West Airline Highway. We have a petition of several signatures. Last count, it was 27. Totally against this. It's been brought up already before, several of us are on well water, and I love our well water. Yeah, the city's right there in the front yard to get city water, but I'm really satisfied with the well water, and I'm really afraid that, just like the other gentleman said, to be decam, or decarbonated with the oils and the fluids. Yeah, you can watch it, you can monitor it all you want, and then about the time that nobody's there, it goes in the ground. And I do believe there's a natural spring behind my house, and I'm also worried about that. Thank you.
Can we get a copy of that petition, sir? Okay.
William Smith again. Say, we want to know just how many salvage yards, junkyards, or whatever we can have in our area. You folks have to know alter corporations there where Wiseman used to be, it's a big operation. We don't know what gets dumped there, nobody monitors that. We have another gentleman that just bought across Airline Highway there by that dairy had boughten, John Dairy had boughten, or one of the dairies. He's wanting auto salvage in there. That's next to the, what is it, the park commissioner, the, you know, like for Blackhawk and...
Blackhawk County Conservation.
Yeah, right there. He wants to put auto salvage in there. The Plum Boys got a junkyard down on WCFN that needs to be monitored. He's always having problems there, nobody seems to monitor that. So, you know, why do we need another salvage yard in our area? I don't understand this. If people would look into it, if this, I'll give you an idea, Valentine Enterprises, I don't know who they are, where they originated from. I do know Leonard that owns this property or is living on that property right now. I talked to him two weeks ago, he wanted $800,000 for this parcel, and that's when this, this come up. And I thought, how in hell you, excuse me, how the heck you going to get $800,000 out of a scrap yard you got going already? He'd accumulated so much junk. I put up Kelly Freeze Christie Corporation on that same property. You guys know, I'm sure you all know about that operation, and he fled to Brazil, left a bunch of contaminants and stuff. There's been DNR out there, everybody's checked this property out. Supposedly, everything's good. There's another fellow that lives right on Burton Avenue, his property adjoins this property you're talking about. Built a nice, beautiful home there, got burned out, burned it, and he built it again and stayed there. Louis Carter, he sends his regards. He said he shouldn't make it here because he might get thrown out. You know, but I want you to know, all of us in the area are aware that, you know, we love our properties, we all have wells and septic tanks, just like Jim said. Rick bought that land by me, adjoins me 130 acres. What's he going to do with it? We put a salvage yard in there. How's our property value going to go up? One of the persons that talked a lot about the east side, Harold Getty, was right, but Quentin Hart's trying to promote their businesses out there. How in the heck we going to promote businesses with another salvage yard? We'd like, we thought we had them in ours, we lost that. Now they're trying to dump their property. You know, how are we going to generate new businesses out there when we have scrapyards all over the place? I've been here 32 years. Built my house 32 years ago, and... Built my house thirty-two years ago, and we all have acreages. That endear fellow right there, I was trying to get more housing out there. We talked to about it, didn't we? And he said, no, you can't build up there unless you put a house on an acreage. Well, who the heck's going to put a house on an acreage if you got a junkyard next door? And that was for another one of my kids. And that was my son-in-law back there. Brian just built that four-hundred-thousand-dollar house. So please, look at it real close. Thank you.
My name is Robert Corio. I live at eight sixty-one West Airline Highway. I'm just down from this property. I live next door to Mr. Drouedy here. I have a petition here where we have gone around and we have had signatures, people in the area that this has with wells and stuff that are joined to this property or live south of the property that we don't, we are against having an auto salvage yard put in there due to the fact of how are they going to contain the oils and fluids and stuff from the vehicle? Are they contemplating a totally cementing in the whole area back there to preserve? And, you know, what is already in the soil from when Kelly Fries was there? Because I have already talked to the DNR people, and they've already, you know, they want to know exactly too why, you know, such short notice on all this and why the letter, you know, is dated back to May twenty-fifth of two thousand twelve, and you're contemplating this for two thousand thirteen. You know, no rhyme or reason. I think you need to investigate a little more on this or give us more ample time to oppose this and continue on and go farther out with people that are out in that area. Thank you.
After Bob, this is Jim Drouedy again. After Bob got done talking and that, I seen you guys with some special looks. Have you guys seen this letter that you guys put out? That it is dated May of two thousand twelve?
Are you asking the commissioner's staff?
I'm asking you.
No, I have not.
Okay, well...
That's why I wrote that down.
That's what we're kind of really puzzled about. And then the other thing is, is located at seven twenty-nine Airline Highway. They didn't specify east or west, so a lot of people were kind of concerned about that too. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jim Lawless. I live at two thousand two Ashland. I've lived out there my whole entire life. I guess I would like to have the staff or whatever you call yourselves here recommend to the city council that they go out there and police the area, not just this area where they're thinking about setting up another salvage yard, but the whole area. There's trees overgrowing on Burton Avenue. It doesn't get taken care of. There's a place in the two-thousand block of Burton Avenue that's been supposedly, was supposed to be there for some other reason. It's rat-infested. The fences fall and down. The area is not being policed and taken care of. We heard several comments about code enforcement being out there. I can tell each one of you a really good story about code enforcement officer and code enforcement taking care of things out there that isn't being done. And I just see it more and more of it going on and this area being deteriorated more and more if we allow these kind of things continue. Thank you.
I just can't resist getting this off my chest.
Third time's the last one.
Okay. This, I don't know who Valentine Enterprises. I wish somebody had shed some light on that, on who is Valentine Enterprises. Does any of you know? They're the ones requesting the property be made an auto salvage yard. Who is Valentine Enterprises? Do you folks know? Please tell me, so we can tell these folks. And also, if Valentine Corporation or Valentine Enterprises wants a scrapyard, Chase Auto is selling out down there by Mitchell Sandpits. Tell them to check that out. Thank you.
Eric Trader City Planner. The application was submitted by Valentine Enterprises LLC and signed by a Leonard Hogelshut, and I don't know if the applicant is here, but representatives of the applicant are here, and they can address that in more detail.
I'm Kirk Geddy, from Loo Kess and Associates. We did the survey, design work for the site for this application. For those that were questioning where Valentine came from, that's who's holds the deed on the property currently. Now, if it's a company that no longer exists, their name's still on the deed, so that's what we have to go by. We submitted this. This area gives me a bit of dated history because I didn't realize how long. I moved here in April nineteen ninety, and I was working for another firm at the time. And I actually worked for the party that had this area zoned to M. And that staff request changed it to MP in nineteen ninety-three, when we paved the road south of Airline. I can't think of the name of it yet.
Daniel Drive.
Down Street.
Daniel Drive.
Daniel Drive, yeah. When you look up there at the photograph, kind of the area right to the west of where the southern tip of the pond is, there's a nest-curved road coming off of Burton. That was, we did that work during that timeframe. We had issues at that time that people were coming in off some of the roads to the south and coming in there and illegally dumping. So I'm aware of that there have been issues back there. I was not aware of what had gone on with Fries. I do know that for most recycling operations, salvage operations, et cetera, the DNR and EPA, not just the local city regulations, are very strict anymore on caring for and protecting groundwater sources and any contamination that could go on. Due to other development work, I'm very well aware of, this entire area is short on water, but not as badly as it's short on sanitary sewer service. We have tried to recommend that the sanitary sewer be extended because septic tanks are just a headache and waiting to happen. Part of the reason for this request was it's, there are several offers on the table at this point in time that will not go ahead unless this area is approved for this proposed It is typical of that kind of thing anymore, that businesses are requesting the current owners to go through the review process and get the application in place before they'll buy the property. That way, they aren't like Menards. They don't get stuck with something that they're not going to be able to work with. Menards happens to be a whole other issue, but that's... You got any questions?
Any questions for the applicants or representatives?
Mr. Eshman, this is Mike Young. So are you saying that Valentine Enterprises will...
Will not be the operator of this facility.
Okay, can you say who will be the operator of this facility?
We haven't sold it yet, and we don't know which one of the people that are operating...
Can you say now who the operator will be?
No.
Okay, because I think that's one of the concerns that we're hearing from a lot of people is what, if this is approved, it'll essentially be permanent. And if it's approved now, I think people want to know who would the operator be before going with it. And the recommendation now is to table it to figure out who the owner is and essentially who would be the operator. So I think that's why the information is important.
I know this is an issue that I've seen going on since I moved here in nineteen ninety about where do you put salvage yards? I've heard other people complain, why you putting them all on one end of town? At the same time, yeah, I've heard contamination stories, and yes, I've been around town enough with excavations that there's more ground contamination right here now than what already exists than what we're talking about with the new development. But it's just one of those issues that I've seen the industry is changing, that with the new regulations coming up, they don't want to put their money into it until they know they've got someplace they can move to. And so, at which point, yes, once this is established, then you're going to have, I'm going to say at least five, they're going to say, okay, let's go see who's going to buy it.
So are you saying there's potentially five salvage yard operators that would purchase the land?
If they're looking at it, yes. Only one of them's going to buy it.
Okay. I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but just who hired you to do this survey?
Leonard did.
And is he the owner?
He's Valentine LLC.
Okay. Does he live there? Is that the house? Okay.
And to answer another question, I, there's been some confusion over that, and it was my whole thought when we first got started. The house will remain independent of the operation as an office building. In other words, it's going to not look much different than it does, other than, yes, there'll be a fence behind it and a gate to seal off what goes in back. But that's basically going to be the office for the gate.
Okay. Is Leonard here or prepared to speak now?
Not here.
Okay.
So is he the one that actually divided this? I guess my question is, I know there's two parcels there. Okay, the property's been divided. The house is counted as one parcel. The property behind, what is the junkyard area now, is another parcel. Is that all considered that he's selling off the back half, or he's going to live in the front half and then maintain business through the back half?
He's selling the entire property.
Yeah, because in the way it's coordinated here, in the county, Blackhawk County Assessment and Tax Information, there's two parcels for that property.
That's correct. It's two parcels right now. And the house is on one, and part of the operation is on the house property and part of it's on the property in back.
So he's actually selling out, he doesn't, he's not going to maintain and stay there, in other words? It's just selling the property off.
As I said, this was to make, the buyer wants this application in place or the whole thing disappears.
Well, I'd like a hundred million dollars too, but I'd like that in place before I give you the money.
I...
You know, I'm real optimistic, I'd like to win lottery.
I understand that. And I...
Can we have, can we have one? Excuse me. Excuse me. One person at a time, please, right now.
I fully understand.
And you have to address the commission and not each other.
I fully understand what he's talking about, and I guess, though I'm not a kid anymore, but I've heard, grown up doing this work, and since I was in my teens, I have always heard, not in my backyard. And my reality is, okay, is this look like a project that it's in the best interest of the community? Is it not going to harm the community in general? And does it increase tax base? And that's what I'm looking at is, with the current rules that are in place by DNR and EPA, this will not impact negatively the neighborhood, and it will increase tax base. I don't believe that.
I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions for the gentleman podium. So in addressing his concerns of the two parcels, the house is going to remain, but is separate from this transaction, correct?
No.
So he's selling everything, but...
It is part of the transaction. It's just that it won't be a, it's not going to look any different than a house. But it's going to be used as an office. It's a lot like if you get around some of the quarries. You'll see what looks like a house sitting out there. There may even be an operator living in that place, but it is their office. That's how it's going to be operated.
And then to further go on Mr. Young's comments, the property is currently under contract or the owner is coming in just to apply for this so he can get it under contract?
That's correct.
Which one? I asked two questions.
The second.
He's doing this prior to getting it under contract?
There are no parties interested in buying this property at this point in time as is. With the application in place and approved, then he's got buyers that want to negotiate with him. The buyers don't want to do what I'm doing right now.
Right, but there's no contract in place that says that this purchase is subject to this being completed?
No, they don't want to waste their money or time.
Well, they'd be having the owner waste his money or time like he's doing now. It'd be no different.
They don't see it that way, but yeah.
Right, all right.
Okay.
Thanks.
My name is Dennis Clark. I live at twenty-two oh-four Ashland. On the map, I would have been down on the park a few hundred feet from getting a notice. And I still appreciate how things are done and need to be done, and I get it, that it's always difficult to try to be fair. Two things I want to share with you. One is the city of Waterloo, the state of Iowa, has suffered enough regarding that piece of land. I give you a phone number and a person to contact. His name is Dan Cook. He's the contamination site section out of Des Moines. The phone number is five one five, two eight one, four one seven one. Dan was the lead person in, I believe it was two thousand five, two thousand six, taking care of the contaminants, at that time working with the bank. Not going into the sad story of that property, but Dan would be the one to talk to regarding the sand, regarding the water flow, regarding the threat of anything like that happening in that area.
Have you visited with Mr. Cook?
Not for years.
Okay, so not since this, obviously this only came out last week to you guys, but not since this?
No.
Receiving the letter?
No.
Okay.
The other thing is, is that it's a beautiful part of the world, and there's a lot of people that care for it. I also know that human beings make a lot of trash, and we need to take care of that as well. But at this point, I'm not convinced that that piece of land would or should, you know, be considered for anything. It hasn't been rehabbed. There's a term called brown, which means that there's still contaminants there that are waiting. Just because it was taken care of enough for a bank to be able to sell it doesn't mean. So be very cautious in the future in your tabling. Please look into this sincerely. Have a look at that. And the waterway, the water just flows a lot of places, and that's how it works. Thank you.
My name is Dan Hillman. I'm with Four Seasons Realtors. I'm the broker that does have the property for sale. I might be able to share and enlighten some of the questions y'all have. I was gone, of course, for twenty-two years. I was in Kansas City, but I moved back here in two thousand two, became a broker in two thousand four or five approximately. I dealt with First Security Bank. This is when I met Fries before... In 2004 or '05 approximately, I dealt with First Security Bank. This is when, I met Freeze before he absconded and went to Brazil. And I know it was a nightmare situation for the residents over there, what he created. The bank did choose me at that time to be the broker to sell the property and I listed the property. I am the person that sold it to Leonard Hogluck, who then turned it into Valentine Enterprises. I worked hand in hand with Dan Cook, with the DNR, in order to get this property into a, what's called a no further action. I worked with the city and Geiger, Mr. Geiger just passed away recently, but he was chosen by the city to come out and there was a huge, huge tire problem. I think the city even gave a grant or helped him with funds to clean up the tires. That was one of the biggest. There was also fertilizers out there. There's fertilizer plants. There was, there was concern about surface water. There's concerns about soils. The soils was tested. There was all kinds of talk, well, the tires were a nightmare. That was a whole nother deal, but there was water tests, soil tests. The DNR was over the property. We did receive a no further action, that the property did clear and had been cleaned up as far as, as any, what are they, you know, contaminants or, or that. So we did receive that from Dan Cook. I worked hand in hand with him to get that done. The tires were cleaned up, the fertilizers was hauled off. The property's usage in the past, it's zoned M2P. That wasn't something that we put on the property as a zoning. That was already done. That requirement was there. This is a similar situation I've seen that you maybe could compare it to, use it as an analogy of, you know, you, you buy a farm property. You go out and you buy a piece of property and all of a sudden you find out that your neighbor wants to put in a hog confinement. Well, you don't wanna smell the hog confinement. Well, that's understandable, but the property was zoned. What it comes down to is what's the zoning that was on the property and what's allowed legally? What's been the past usage of the site? Planning and zoning has done an excellent job with what they had to work with. Leonard's, uh, so the usage, as we understood it, is, is, is to, you know, allow us for this to happen. It's been, it's been cleaned up. Leonard has done an excellent job, believe it or not. I've been, worked with him hand in hand in cleaning this up rubble. He had a crusher out, he cleaned up. There was five stories high of, of cement out there. He brought in, I didn't even know it existed, but they crush it up and they make gravel and he sold the gravel and tried, and cleaned up the property a lot from after when Freeze went, I'm sorry, we'll be addressing the council. So, you know, and I understand the concern. Being, being environmentalist myself and, and you know, I, I, I agree that there has to be checks and balances in place. I have a 11-year-old son and I'd like to leave this world a better, a better place for him. So those, the concerns that have been brought up are real and they're justified by the owners as far as the water. We all know how important that commodity is. All of those will be addressed. I think you're, you're correct in tabling this at this time so that we can address the concerns of the neighbors and let them know that this is, you know, something will be handled in a proper manner. So, do you have any questions of me at this time?
I do.
Does the council have any questions at this time? You asked about Valentine Enterprises. Has that been cleared up? His, now, a corporation's, you know, maybe he hasn't filed the proper paper. He is Valentine. His middle name is Valentine. That's where he got the name of the corporation. He is the person. There's no ghost. There's no hidden secrets here. He is the person. He is the, the corporation.
Yeah, some of the, the question, this is Mike Young. Again, some of the questions I had though also came where I was going with this is, let's say, everything just works out perfectly for this and it falls into place, but there, the staff has recommended that be tabled, but that if it ever was approved, that a number of conditions be put on there.
Correct.
I think it's seven and that's the most I've seen for conditions to be placed on, from a staff recommendation before. So what I was getting at with my question was, would the owner even agree to these?
Well, I can't speak for the owner and he was gonna, he did plan on being here. Something's happened. He did plan on being here and addressing the council as well. So I can't speak in that light. Will he agree to them? They've recommended them. What we look at, what we're looking at is a broker, I've been a real estate broker and mortgage banker for 35 years. This isn't, you know, the first rodeo in as far as that variance and, and things. The property is zoned. Okay, so we legally, you know, so that's what we've gone forward with and of course, these concerns are gonna be brought up and we will, we will like try to address them and, but in the past, what's its past usage been? You know, has it improved from, from when, you know, from the, from the past usage? When he had fertilizer containers up and, and rubble when he's demolishing buildings and snow removal mounds of stuff that he scraped off the lots and, you know, those type of concerns would have warranted possible surface water contaminants, that type of thing. He was storing, sticking, so, and like I said, the pond, there's a pond, a half acre pond. It's, everything's been tested. I mean, we have a no further action. The DNR said, or else the bank wouldn't have taken it back and sold the property. Okay, so I mean, that stuff, this stuff that was, these questions that are being brought up now, we've already gone through those. The bank has paid the money and spent the money. They lost hundreds of thousands of dollars on this property. Lincoln Savings Bank, they took it in the shorts for multi-millions of dollars. What, what Mr. Freezy did was just unbelievable. You know, it's just totally, so, so anyway. There's no, at this point in time, I can tell you there's interest in the property. Do I know, can I give you the name? They've not given me that permission to do that. That's often done in real estate. Property can be transferred and bought, but the thing is this, no matter who buys it, or no matter who owns it, there's provisions in place. There's checks and balances for salvage yards. There's environmental concerns. I know Pat real well and Chase and Weekly. I've got to know them since I've been back, but in other matters of business, not necessarily junkyard, but, you know, you've got checks and balances for that, once that usage is granted. So, I guess that's, I would ask the council go forward.
This is Schrader with staff. The property is zoned M2P Planned Industrial District, so with that does come some uses that would be considered principally permitted. A salvage yard is not one of those uses. It is not principally permitted. A salvage yard is not principally permitted in any zoning district. It is a special permit use permitted in any of the industrial zoning districts, which would include the M1 industrial, the M2 industrial, or the M2P Planned Industrial District. And to further comment regarding conditions, this site is zoned M2P Planned Industrial District, which is a site plan specific district, meaning there's two requests in front of you. A site plan amendment request, which would go on before the city council, if acted on, not tabled, and a special permit request, which will go on to the Board of Adjustment. As part of any zoning, a rezone or a site plan amendment, conditions do have to be agreed to in writing by the applicant. As part of a special permit, the Board of Adjustment can place conditions on a request and they do not have to be agreed to in writing. The Board of Adjustment can approve them with those conditions and if the applicant does not agree to those conditions, he cannot use that use as proposed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Art.
Any other questions from the, from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience before we look to close the public hearing? One last one. Oh, I think the lady was up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, come.
You've spoke three times.
Hi, I'm Vicki Lake, 921 West Airline Highway, and we're totally opposed against it too. And there's also lots of wildlife back there. What would happen to all them? That's it.
All right, folks, listen to us. We have turkeys in the area. We have deer in the area. We love our wildlife. We love our waterfall with all the ponds around our area. This gentleman was talking about crushing up concrete up there, the old Freeze site, Leonard's place. I never heard no crushers. There's a mountain of concrete up there and I don't know what else. We also have some live coyote living up there. I hear every night. We love our coyote, but they get in our way. They gotta leave. You know, but the thing is, we have a lot of wildlife up there. Everybody loves the wildlife. I'm just asking if you folks to take the time and really study this thing, if you plan on tabling it. That's the way it goes. That's, you know, we're here to know what's gonna happen and we don't know who the Board of Adjustment is. They make that final determination. We don't know. We don't know who they are. Do we have a right to voice our opinion to the council? Do we have a right to voice our opinion to the Board of Adjustment? We're just hoping it won't fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
I'm Robert Corio. I live at 861 West Airline Highway. Before I come to the meeting tonight, I was on the phone with Joe Sanfilipe. He was involved with Dan Cook at this Freeze property site of doing sand and soil testing. One concern that he brought to my attention that if you do relinquish this property for them to take and put an auto salvage yard in there, are they going to take in concrete that whole area for when they're taking and disassembling or tearing down these automobiles? Because the contaminants that are already in the soil, if they put more on top, that stuff is gonna go down and go into the water system. There's no way you're gonna stop it. So I guess, you know, what we're in concerns with is, are they gonna take and cement that whole area to stop? You know, and use it as an auto salvage yard out there and prevent oils and transmission fluid, gas, antifreeze, battery acid and all that stuff? Is that gonna be contained and taken care of in a proper manner? And not just, you know, here, we just, we're looking at the money end of this. We're gonna sell the property and just get rid of it? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gary Lake. I live at 921 West Airline Highway. I've lived out there for probably 20 years. I built a new house six years ago. It's nice. It's quiet. You have wildlife. I mean, it's great. How much noise does an auto salvage place make? Is that quietness gonna go away all day long? You gonna hear clanking and clanking and crashing and banging all day long? And maybe end of the night? I don't know. We can hear all from my house. It ain't that bad, but now you're talking about putting a place right next to me? I bought five acres behind my house so that nobody else could build back there, 'cause it, it's zoned, commercial, okay? I bought five more acres behind my house so I didn't have somebody sit in my backyard. You know, we, I know all the people here in this room like the peace and quiet we have out there. And what's an auto salvage gonna do to the air pollution as far as noise? I mean, that's gotta be crazy. There are nice houses out there all the way around it. You got a gentleman building $400,000 home. He wants to listen to that all day? I don't. I know I don't. So, you know, just, there's a lot of, a lot of things to consider in this thing. I mean, from the water to the peace and quiet, to the serenity, to the wildlife. I mean, the end, it's endless. I mean, you can go on all day, all day long. That's about all I got, but, you know, I, I don't think it's right to do that to a community. How would you like it if they wanted to put an auto salvage yard in your backyard? You know, think about it. Would it be good for you? Would it be good for us? I, I say not. Thank you.
One more comment, then we'll look to close the public hearing.
My name is Diana Corio. I live at 861 West Airline Highway and we've been there close to 20 years. A lot of the people in the neighborhood have lived there a long time and are now retired. And now, when we're in the age we can enjoy the peace and quiet and the wildlife, now you guys are thinking of taking it all away. I don't think it's right and I'm sure that's what the rest of the people are thinking too. We don't need all the noise. That's why we're in the country almost. Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing? Is that what you're looking for?
Move to close the public hearing.
Check it.
Move in second to close, close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. The hearing's closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or action on the request.
This is Gustafson. It just seems like everything that's been presented to us, there are too many unanswered variables that for us to take any action except to table this. To vote it down completely wouldn't be fair to all parties because of the fact that we don't have all the information that we need to make an informed decision. So I would really like to see us go ahead and table this and gather more data, get more information so that we can make an informed decision that, and we don't have to walk away saying, you know, well, we just did it in haste.
Was that a motion or a comment?
I, well, it was a comment, but I'd be happy to make it a motion that we table this application at this time.
This is Cox. Is there some kind of a timetable on what the table would look like?
Not that we're aware of, in terms of timetable that they need.
That the applicant? When would it come back up for vote?
I don't know. I was making some notes that, what people were talking about and, you know, I think we'd need a specific site plan for the salvage yard that would go in there that would detail where they would take out any oil or crushing or anything like that that they talked about. We need a site plan to show where the house would have a fence behind it. I'd like to talk to Dan Cook and Joe from the DNR. Also, we'd like to get a copy of the no further action letter that they say they have from the DNR to look at that, as well as probably map out some of the topos and look at the drainage in that area. So it probably, might be a couple of months.
This is Morrison. I have a couple of thoughts. With the applicant's history of issues with code enforcement, I'm not overwhelmingly convinced that they'll be compliant in the future and they can't guarantee what a future buyer is going to do. There's a history of contamination on this piece of property and we have overwhelming public sentiment. I'm more inclined to deny the request instead of tabling. So I would be willing to make that a motion.
This is Cox.
We have one motion on the floor that would have to, we have to have a second or she has to withdraw.
I have a second, Carolyn's.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to table the requests. We'll look for further discussion from Cox.
I was just gonna say that I don't, I don't see how any of the information that we would get in the next few months would change my opinion. So I would be more in favor of denying the request today.
And this is Mike Young. I would have, I don't think there's any way we can approve it now. I don't think I would approve it even in the future if it came up, but I, I still think the applicant deserves a chance to present the information. I, I agree with Carol on tabling it for now and providing the applicant a chance. I do think though, the applicant needs to be aware of really the, the questions that have come up today and the opposition that has come up with a number of factors. And just to add to Mr. Anderson's questions, that really the status of the applicant, of the LLC as well. And then also in the staff report, it talked about the additional information and detailed plan, including a business plan on how the site would be properly operated as a salvage yard to make sure it's in compliance. But I do think it's, it's fair to allow the applicant at least the right to respond to that. So I'm in favor of tabling it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table the request. This is going to be for the site amendment request as well as the special permit request. So we will do a roll call vote.
This is to table.
Correct. Yes is to table. Cox?
No.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Morrison?
No.
Passes four to two. That passes four to two. The request is, both requests are tabled until we have further information from the applicant. So what that means is this will come back, maybe.
And we will resend out notice.
And we will resend out notice, hopefully with the correct date on it this time.
Okay. Say again, yes. Yeah, you all, you will receive notice again as you did before, hopefully a little sooner without, well, we apologize for the holiday, but yeah, hopefully for that. Whatever they re-.
The letter probably noted the agenda of the Board of Adjustment, but because the planning commission has tabled it, it will not be placed on the Board of Adjustment's agenda.
Or the council.
Or the councils. It'll have to wait until after this commission acts.
We can notify everyone on the petition.
You just want this to go to the-
You can keep it. I can get ahold of them people.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll let everybody clear out real quick if you choose to leave. I think if we, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just stop you quick, Kurt. We're gonna continue with our agenda. If you guys wanna discuss it after the meeting, feel free, but we need to continue with our agenda, so. All right, we'll move on to the next item is a encroachment request. This is a request by American Steel for an encroachment agreement to allow for the construction of a new freestanding sign within the 16-foot utility easement located at 735 Ainsborough Avenue. Staff court?
This is Schrader with staff. The applicant requests to construct the freestanding sign just west of the building at 735 Ainsborough Avenue between the road and the building within a utility easement. The sign will consist of approximately a 10-foot-long metal I-beam with custom fabricated lettering and logo attached. The applicant was originally planning to do a monument-type sign on a stone base, but because of the easement and location of a sanitary sewer line, the applicant's proposing to construct the sign to a single pole, which the footing for the pole can maintain a little greater distance from the sewer line then. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer line located on the property just east of the right-of-way line of Ainsborough Avenue within a 16-foot utility easement. There's also a 48-inch storm sewer located just west of the sanitary sewer line just inside of the right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to build the sign with a six, within that 16-foot utility easement to within two feet of the sanitary sewer line, and will agree to an agreement document that will require him to remove the portion of the sign extending above grade if the sewer line needs to be excavated, and recognizes that the sign footing would likely have to be reconstructed if the sewer line is excavated. The applicant's proposing to place the freestanding sign within two feet of the sewer line, and the building is located approximately 16 feet from the property line just outside of the easement. The applicant could build a sign south of the building and further, a little further to the east, which would not be located within an easement. However, this would require the sign to be located within the applicant's equipment yard and parking lot. The lots along Ainsborough Avenue are somewhat shallow due to the right-of-way acquisitions from the interstate substitution program that widened Ainsborough Avenue from two lanes to its current four-lane width. This often causes extra actions similar to this request for redevelopment projects. The engineering department, waste management department, and waterworks have indicated that they are opposed to the request, noting that such encroachments should not be allowed within utility easements, and that the applicant would have the option to move the sign south of the building outside of the utility easement. The engineering department noted that if the request is to be approved despite the objections, that they would request that at a maximum that the footing for the sign not extend more than six feet into that easement. Staff recommends that the request for the encroachment agreement to allow for the placement of a sign within the easement be approved, as the request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. There would appear to be limited options for other locations of an area where a freestanding sign could be located and subject to a signed and executed encroachment agreement that enables the City of Waterloo to terminate the agreement and the right to remove the sign in the event that there is needed street or utility purposes.
Questions for staff?
This is Morrison. If the utilities needed to be repaired, would the sign be removed at the applicant's cost, not the city's?
Yes, and the applicant has agreed to that. He was proposing to build this sign to where it would essentially, the footing and the sign would be, you know, basically separate, and the sign could bolt down to the footing so that he could unbolt it and remove the sign, and would agree that he would remove the sign. I guess there is some, you know, question as to the footing that got brought up at the technical review committee, if, you know, he would also be responsible for removing the footing out of their way. That hasn't been relayed on to the applicant, so I'm not sure if he would be okay with that as well, although there was, you know, indication that the footing might not really be much of a concern if they're in there with heavy equipment excavating, and they get to that point, you know, based on how they'll have to excavate to a shallow slope for, you know, grade protection, that if it undermines that footing once the sign's removed, it might not be that big of a deal for them to just pick up the footing and set it aside. But the applicant may very well be willing to include removal of the footing too. I don't, we hadn't asked him that yet.
And then it's obviously back far enough. It's not gonna be impacted by snow removal? Like, the city wouldn't be liable if a truck smashed it?
Right. It will not overhang the actual right-of-way. So, you've got, you know, from the edge of the road, because of how Ainsborough was widened, there's not a ton of extra right-of-way from the edge of the, you know, back of curb to the right-of-way line, but there is a little bit, and it, the sign will not overhang the right-of-way. It's just that there, in addition to the right-of-way, there's a 16-foot utility easement that basically goes from property line to building line, and it's within that 16-foot easement that he's looking to put the sign. There's the sanitary sewer that's a foot or two east of the right-of-way, so 15 or 14 feet west of the building, and in that gap that he's looking to put the sign. He would prefer to put it as close to the road as he can for visibility purposes, so that's why he was proposing the two feet, you know, having the footing be two feet away from the sanitary sewer line, you know, which would then, the actual sign would probably overhang the sewer line, but not overhang the right-of-way, so there wouldn't be an issue with the, you know, snowplows. But the engineering department's requesting that, you know, it be pushed a little bit further back and maintain at least, you know, a maximum of a six-foot encroachment into that easement. That might require a slight reconfiguration of his sign. He's, as you can see in the packet, the original proposal that he submitted was a monument, you know, base-type sign, so he hasn't redesigned it yet as a pole-type sign, so I, I don't know. He was, like I said, was originally proposed as a 10-foot-wide I-beam. I'm not sure if he could put the footing in there in a spot that would be, you know, not exceeding six foot into the easement and, you know, still do that 10-foot sign, so that might require a slight modification. But again, we hadn't had an opportunity to relay that option to the applicant to see if he would agree to that.
Any other questions for staff?
It seems like there's a lot of question marks about what exactly is gonna happen. Is this really something that we should be talking about when you don't have all of the facts and figures in front of you?
I, I guess that's, I definitely can see your point. At the same time, they were hoping to get this sign in yet this year, which is kind of why they were rushing to get it on this agenda and hoping to move forward with it, but that will be up to the commission.
But you're wanting us to improve this encroachment based on the fact that the company may do this and may do that, and what happens if they don't?
It's subject to them agreeing to whatever we put it, so if you wanted to add something to that, where, as, as Eric said, we're not sure if they'll agree to, you know, how much it overhangs or who's replacing the footing. You know, we can add that in there. He has to replace the footing. If he doesn't sign it, it doesn't matter. Doesn't matter how we voted if he didn't sign it, so it's subject to that yet.
This is Rankin. Eric, are there other businesses along there that have encroachments? You can't really tell from the pictures, but it looks like there's some signs kind of in the distance that maybe are, are kinda right on the corner of the building, so they're probably not in the easement. Is that a safe?
There, there is at least one business not too far to the north that does have a sign that definitely does encroach into the easement. It's not a real recent sign, but-
By agreement or?
No, there was indication that there was a permit issued for it, so it was apparently a staff error that it didn't get caught, that it was within an easement. That's quite a few, I don't remember the year of it, but it was probably at least 15, 20 years ago. So, I'm not aware if there are any other signs in the immediate vicinity that encroach into the easement or not, but there's one not too far to the north. But that was by mistake.
I guess I'm of the feeling that the easement that is there is small because of the widening of Ainsborough already. There's already utilities in that easement, their sewer, I think maybe storm sewer also. That's what those areas are for, for utilities, and I guess I'm just in favor of having signs and retaining walls and whatever they might be beyond the property and not within the easements as much as possible, and I, and I think that this property certainly works to have the sign outside of the easement.
Eric Thorston, senior engineer, I think what you have to remember is that, and the real reason engineering, waste management, waterworks are, don't like these types of agreements, when you're gonna have to go in and work on these utilities and such, it's gonna be an emergency. There's not gonna be a lot of time to wait around for somebody to come out and move their sign, so that's our big concern. You, you don't have a lot of time to notify somebody and say, hey, can you have this done by next week? We gotta get in there right away, and even if it's overhanging the easement, if you're using, you have to dig to do these things. You have to use a backhoe, so that makes the sign in the way, and that's really why we don't like this sort of thing in the easement. I think Mr. Rankin makes a good point. That's why these easements are here, so there's room to work on these facilities, you know, when you need to, and there are other options here.
Any other questions or comments? Or motion?
I make a motion that we deny the request.
Second.
Moved and seconded to deny the encroachment request. Do a roll call vote. Rankin?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Cox?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes. That request is denied. Next on the agenda is under a plan in studies. This is expansion of the Martin Road Development Plan, TIF District. Staff?
This is Schrader with staff. Just briefly, I'm planning, staff is proposing to expand the City of Waterloo's Martin Road Development Plan in TIF District. The expansion presents a proposal for improvement in location of commercial and industrial development and provides for public improvements in order to increase tax base and employment opportunities in the Martin Road and Highway 63 area. That was a map included in the packet that kind of shows the areas where we are looking at expanding the TIF District. The, I think there is some discussion as to whether or not it's time to rename the TIF District from the Martin Road TIF District to something else, since it's, you know, kind of not really focused around the Martin Road area as the original TIF District was. But that aside, you know, we're kind of looking at an expansion area that kind of covers the South 63 corridor. Any questions for staff?
This is Whitehead. I have a couple questions on some parcels that weren't included. One specifically is on the north side of the exit ramp on, off of 20, I think Young owns that ground.
Actually, that's owned by the cemetery.
That one is? Okay. Thank you for correcting me. So, it's city-owned. And then same thing down south-
Well, they didn't oppose it.
Good point. And then same thing down south. You just go north a little bit. There's that little jog in.
Here?
Yes.
That is, that is designated for residential on the, on the zoning. It's a planned district down there, so we didn't include the residential area. We included the commercial and industrial areas.
Got it.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? So, you're looking for us to approve this?
Yeah, to make a recommendation to the council to proceed with the Martin Road or renamed TIF District expansion.
So, are we, do, are you looking for recommendations for a name?
Sure.
I'm out today. It's been a long day.
Well, didn't you say that it was South 63?
That might not be a bad one, or some variation thereof along that line. US Highway 63 South.
TIF area?
Yep.
Was that a motion, Gustafson?
Sure. I'd move that we approve this renaming of the TIF area.
Expansion.
Yeah, expansion.
Expansion to the US 63 South TIF.
Got that. Any seconds on that?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the expansion of the Martin Road Development Plan and also suggested rename it to the Highway 63 South TIF District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pox? That will go on to council. Next is discussion, possible action, recommendation by two city councils to amend the Code of Ordinances requirements that the chair of the commission shall come from the city-at-large commissioners, which precludes the commission members appointed by the Community Development Board, Human Rights Commission, or Waterloo School Board to serve as chair.
This is Schrader with staff. Just wanna generate some discussion on this, and if you choose to take action to make a recommendation, that, you know, is gonna be your choice. It's that time of year again where we need to elect a chair and a vice chair, and one of the things that has been discussed is there is a provision in the Code of Ordinances on the chapter that regulates the Planning and Zoning Commission that specifically requires that the chair be elected from the at-large commissioners. It, it does not have that requirement for the vice chair, so the vice chair can come from any of the members, including the three appointed positions. That does, I think, sometimes kind of limit the chair pool. That, that provision has actually been in the ordinance for as, as long as I'm aware of, but it wasn't always known, and there have been periods in the past where the chair was from one of those positions, even though it didn't comply with that code. So, we're just questioning whether or not it would make sense to have the council look at amending that, and we would, if you think so, we would like it in form of a recommendation.
So, are we in compliance now?
Yes.
Okay, so I would move that we keep the current chair and vice chair positions and not make any changes.
I don't think that's the agenda item we're on.
That's the next one on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, the not make any changes, I guess, could be part of it, but.
So, what you're saying is we could recommend a council to open it up to all commission members rather than just the at-large?
Yep. There, there's- There, there's an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, you know, unlike an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which you're statutorily provided to make a recommendation to the commission, there's no, you know, statutory requirement that you make a recommendation on a change to the Code of Ordinances, but obviously it involves the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I think, you know, if we were to look to make that change, it would be good to have a recommendation from the commission. So, we've kind of gotten one commissioner kind of suggesting leave it, but we hope to hear some more discussion.
Well, here'd be my comment as we look at it today with the next item, you know, election of it. We'd have three options today, you know, myself and you two over there, because Gary and you guys can't be, but you can be vice. So, my thought would be to open it up to everybody. That's just me, so.
Any other commissioner comments?
This is Mike Young. I, I'm on because of the school board, and this is, it's something, I've chaired the meeting, I think, a couple of times, just when I think different people were out, sort of thing, and it's fine as the, the vice chair. I, I don't have very strong feelings on this, really either way. I mean, I, I understand. It didn't seem to be as much of an issue, I think, early when I first got in here, I think there were more members, weren't there?
Yes. I don't remember exactly what year that was, but the number of the Planning and Zoning Commission was decreased down to nine.
I'm sorry, do we have 11?
No, nine, seven.
We went from nine to seven, I'm sorry, okay.
Well, I think we went from-
12.
Well, 13, yeah, it wouldn't have been an even number, maybe 13 down to nine, and of those nine, seven are at-large and three, or six, three.
You go against it, it's a good way to keep yourself from being chair.
Right, yeah.
I've thought about that.
So, does anybody wanna make a recommendation or not, or just kind of leave it, or?
I would like to recommend that we just leave it the way it is. It seems to be working. If it's not broken, don't fix it.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Anybody wanna second it?
Second.
Moved and seconded to leave the Code of Ordinances, I gotta figure this one out. Leave the Code of Ordinances as it is.
Yeah.
Correct?
That sounds correct.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. All right, next is the fun, election of the chair and vice chair persons for the term ending December 31, 2014. I guess we'll open it up for discussion, so this goes to our previous conversation. Mr. Young, Mr. Cox, Mr. Rankin are, cannot be the chairperson, however, they can be the vice chair. And we can vote for those that are not present. Is that correct?
That's true.
And do you need two separate motions, one for the chair and one for the vice chair, or can we do one motion for a vote?
I would say probably, yeah, either way, but, I mean, 'cause we'll get a feeling what everybody's thinking anyway.
Who's the current vice chair? Yeah. Make a motion that those two gentlemen remain in their current positions as chair and vice chair for the coming year?
Yes. I'll throw in a third, just for good measure.
Who seconded?
Everybody. Everybody did.
Thank you.
Landslide.
So, when I'm not in this chair, how do I get out of this chair? You know what I mean? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Two Dustons are at it again. No more items on the agenda, look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.